This is the Wapaka School District Board of Education meeting.
Okay, it is 5:15. I appreciate everybody making time and attention to join us this evening. We have a lot on the agenda and our district administrators' report, I've been told, is a little longer than usual, so we'll get right to it. That Betty, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
... under God, indivil with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That, I will call the meeting's order.
...
Paul Lipinski has used from the meeting this evening. And that, uh, do you have a microphone down there to do things? Okay, we'll do roll call. Steve Hackett.
Here.
Betty Mannion. Patrick.
Here.
Here.
Sandy Robinson.
Here.
Dale Feld.
Here.
Steve John.
Here.
Um, public comment, is there anyone that wishes to address the board? Okay, we'll go to approval of the agenda.
Second.
I muted it. Yep, it's muted.
Okay, very good. Any discussion? For being done, all in favor?
Hi.
Let's move on to the review of meeting one. Start with number one, please.
Uh, number one, be prepared, stay informed, listen to others, and be open to differing opinions and perspectives. Be inquisitive, reflective, and respectful. Checking our biases and agendas at the door, we will thoughtfully and objectively discuss the facts.
Objection, thinking, and open-minded, respect the opinions of others. Sandy, number four.
Maintaining professional relationships is key. Know and respect the roles and responsibilities of the board governing administration, tactical, and staff operations.
Do you have the phones in front of you? You're on mute, if you could, uh, your number five, please. You still on mute, number lost, heard on time and on time and stay on task. Number six, Pat.
When a board decision is made, we accept and abide by the decisions both publicly and privately. We accomplish more united than divided.
And number seven, Dale.
Honor and protect the expectation of confidentiality of all topics best and discussions held in closed session.
Very much.
Steve, every time I turn it on to talk.
Okay, just got a message saying, Sandy saying it's hard to hear us.
Can't hear you at all.
Okay, how is it? I take my mask off. Any better?
A little bit.
Okay, I don't know if we can do anything here, or Steve.
Ask it better at this point.
Is it better at this point?
Right now it is good. Right now it is good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, that's better. Okay, with that, uh, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We'll start with September 8th, 2020 regular board meeting. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Feld, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Betty Mannion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We'll move on to communications. Mr. Trump.
Thank you. We have a few announcements under communications. Uh, National Study and Appreciation Week is October 2nd. Wisconsin School Board Week was this past week, October 5th through the 9th. National School Lunch Week, October 12th through the 6th. National School Bus Safety Week was October 19th through the 23rd. Is that what it is? October is Gifted Education Month. We have a thank you to Synergy Home Care for the generous donation of face masks. And a thank you to the Club of Wapaka for a grant in the amount of $1,740 for the purchase of sanitizer and PPE. And then my report. Yes.
Before we move on to your re- Uh, is there a motion to exceed uh, the donation of masks for the home care and the grant for the sanitizer and PPE from the Rotary Club?
So move.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Fair, is there a second? Second by Mr. Feld.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Can I ask a question? Where is that sanitizer, uh, place or, um, better several? All over the street, okay. Okay. I just asked that only because it does appear to be one singular here. I didn't know if there was one larger one. So, okay, that answers my question. Thanks.
Okay, the district administrators' report, please.
Learning in 2021 continues to be positive. Just like I said last month, I can still say that this has been the best start yet. Things are still going well despite COVID and our county increases taking place. And this is a true credit to our staff, especially our three nurses and the planning and work they've invested into the school year. We have a lot to celebrate. We've been successful at keeping COVID at bay despite our subpool dropping from 77 substitutes to only 14 substitutes this year. We're being creative and staying open. We are repurposing staff, and people are working hard at following the three Ws. I have some school discipline and Gagel reports, uh, to share, noting that those, uh, typical issues that exist in a normal school year significantly decreased. Part of the reason that we've been so successful at this part, this, uh, unique year is our AB schedule that we uh, we still are in. It reduces the number of daily contacts for our students and the staff. And a majority of the other districts, uh, in our area started four or five days of in-person instruction, and almost of them, at least in the secondary, are all virtual. As you know, we hired a third nurse, which allows us to do a thorough job of training staff and students on health and safety precautions, communicating with FENIs, and contact tracing. Most of our area districts have one nurse or zero nurses, and they have a hard time keeping up with the contact tracing, but so far with our three, we, uh, our nurses have done an excellent job. Families and our staff are following the sibling exclusion practice, where if one sibling is ill, the rest of the siblings in that household remain home. Several districts in our area had not previously been doing that practice. Seating charts for every classroom and lunchroom, which support physical distancing efforts, and when necessary, a back tracing. A lot of their area districts are not did not do that. And then that level, high level of fidelity in, in our observations with our staff and students and following the three Ws, and extensive sanitization and cleaning protocols, including the use of daily fogging, which a lot of our area school, other schools are not doing. This first graph that is up on the screen is a district-wide Google or Gagel data. So Gagel is that software that flags when there's inappropriate material on an email or on a document, a shared document, or in Schoology. And you can see in that first row, which is this year from August 1st of 2020 to today, October 13th of 2020, we had 6.3 incidents per school, 14,169 reviewed items, total incidents of 63, total violations of 43. When you compare that to last year, from August 1st to October 13th, we had 15.2 incidents per school during that same timeframe. So we have 8.0 less, or it dropped 9% the number of incidents per school. The reviewed items dropped by 3,358, or I'm sorry, increased, an increase of 31%. And that's good because more, uh, time is spent on the computer this year with all of the remote learning taking place than, than last year. So we would anticipate about a 30 or 31% increase. The total number of incidents that were flagged this year is 63, last year was 152, so that's a drop by 59%. And the total number of violations were 43 in this year, uh, this year, last year 106, 63 less. That's, uh, a decrease by 59%. So that Gagel data is, is telling us that there's less issues with inappropriate material on the devices. The next is the middle discipline data. This includes total major and minors. And you can see the fifth grade this year, 14 incidents, I'm sorry, last year 14 incidents, this year 11 incidents, a decrease of 3, 21% decrease. Sixth grade, we dropped by 94%. Seventh, 98%, and eighth grade, the number of discipline incidents dropped by 96%. The high school discipline data, the same thing, majors and minors, all the grades put together. We had 220 last year, this year 20, a 91% decrease in discipline. Our principals are telling us why. Some of our, what we term as frequent flyers are learning remotely. Due to the cohorts, obviously, students are, are split and, and reduced, so the peer influence is significantly reduced. Less numbers per grade at every grade level. We've had an average of 14 students in our seventh and eighth grade classrooms. Our structured lunch for physical distancing and contact tracing purposes reduces the interactions between students. No physical gatherings among students in the commons in the morning or at lunch in the afternoon. And lower interactions within our classrooms just due to the physical There are concerns that our principals are sharing with us about our remote learning and in our hybrid AB schedule. Student engagement is our number one concern. Students not completing some of the work, not attending some of the in-person classes or the live remote Google meets, not completing assignments while learning remotely. Understanding of the material is a concern, not reaching that same 100% potential of learning that we experience while, for in-person learning. Our live remote and on-demand remote and AD, AB day schedule hybrid are not the same type of learning, and the depth of knowledge is lacking. Teachers doing, are doing a great job under the circumstances that we're in. At the same time, students are frustrated with the classwork. Many students are not prepared for the problem solving at this capacity. The social emotional concerns of remote learners exist not only for students, but families and staff, and many on-demand students are not working up to the full potential. There's inconsistencies in families and their expectations. Some of our parents are at work and the students are left home alone. Many students are too immature for this type of responsibility as well. 321 or 91 high school students, 4% of our high school students paying out leave or semester courses. Our current efforts, teachers and counselors, are to meet virtually along with sending emails and follow-up phone calls to students and parents. Our social workers are making home visits. Administrators are creating IC blasts, emails, phone calls, and sending letters. Within the last two weeks, letters were mailed to all of our parents of seniors who are at risk or not on track to graduate. We're observing, same time, we are observing staff strengthening their mental models and finding ways to overcome these challenges that we're faced with COVID. And we have to remember, no one signed up to teach the way that we're teaching this year. We continue to remain positive, upbeat, and enthusiastic in our journey this year. We know there are many negative ramifications for students when all learning is done remotely, and we're excited to continue to be able to provide our in-person opportunities. This is a test of our care strength, and we see our staff rising to the occasion. Mark, if you put up green, the, uh, co- our, our dashboard. So when you go to our on that red ribbon, there's a few places it can take you, and in the middle, it'll take you to our, our COVID dashboard that we created last week. We put up, and we're continuing, this is continuing to evolve as, as time goes on, we're, uh, putting more details in and, and making it look a little bit more professional. The purpose of this page is for us to be as transparent as we can regarding the number of students and staff who are current positives. We intentionally are not breaking this data up by buildings, public viewing, just to ensure confidentiality. Schools our size, who have small numbers of positives, make it very easy for people to identify who those positives would be, so uh, for, in, in response to the HIPAA law, we, we are intentionally not doing that. Even though there are districts around the state that are doing that, and we've seen them, we've been counseled not to go that route. Precautionary measures. We currently have four classrooms that we have had to transition into remote learning, which means they were in-person learning, and, uh, this week we had to move them to, uh, just remote at the time. While these decisions are challenging to make, we know that being proactive is key to reducing the spread of the illness. Again, some of our four classes are out pending test results, while some are out due to a positive test that, from one of the individuals in the classroom. But by being proactive, we're hoping to decrease the time all students and staff are out of the buildings. Time length could be a day or two, or pop up to 14 days. Despite the need to close classrooms, please know that each classroom teacher continues to teach from home if they're well enough, and we appreciate all the efforts to ensure that learning continues even as they shifted from in-person to remote learning basically overnight. This next is the staff data points. And when you look at this, just picture in your mind, now, this is just for classroom teachers only. So these are classroom teachers that we would need to cover for them in their absence. And you can see the day by day, starting on September 23rd right through to today. So for instance, on October 13th today, we had eight teachers out with COVID-related. That could be a close contact, it could be contact with a positive, it could be that they are positive, or a test is pending. Uh, we have eight. The number of additional teachers out today were three. They were out for a non-COVID-related reason. It could have been an appointment, it could have been just something that was scheduled. The next column, the third, is the number of subs secured. So we were able to secure five subs today. Final column, the number of internal coverage. That means that six, in six cases, we had to have internal coverage, so that's repurposing staff. It could be a librarian, it could be a title teacher, it could be an instructional coach. We have between 14 to 16 individuals in our district that we can shuffle around, uh, to cover for other people. So we're proud to say that we've been able to, uh, keep our doors open and, uh, provide that in-person learning, which we know is best, not only academically, but from a social emotional standpoint as well. So you can see, when you look at the bottom, since the 23rd of September, we've had 134 staff absences, and that equates to about 5.6 per day for teachers out with COVID, 3.9 per day for teachers just out in general, non-COVID reasons. We were getting about, uh, an average of 4.6 subs per day and 5.4 internal coverages per day. Now, this next graph is similar, but to staff, so now it's not just the classroom teacher, but the aides, the sedaries, all of us, administrators in general, all of us. So total staff out related to COVID per day, total students out related to COVID matters per day, and then I don't want to add totals. And you can see just from, on September 29th, we had 83, and it went to 70, then 103, 106, 125, 123. All the way up, uh, yesterday was 175, today our total quarantine population of, uh, 2,448 individuals is 182 quarantined as of today. With my report, talk a little bit, I'm planting a seed. This is an FYI. Getting educated so that everybody's aware, we're going to be bringing to you at one of our upcoming board meetings very soon, a flexibility request that needs approval from the board for the 2021 school year, asking permission to not use any of the documentation components within frontline, the ed effectiveness, the EE system, except for staff who are consistently observed operating and developing, or needs improvement, or unacceptable performance indicator. All staff will still be observed, and staff student growth will still be discussed during pre and post observations, both formally and informally. We believe that for this school year, shifting our focus to more of a coaching model and less of a document evaluation model will allow our teachers to spend more time working and improving their online instructional skills. In addition, to further enhance our educators' online instructional skills, our district is committed to providing staff with online instructional professional development on Wednesday afternoons. So we're going to focus on building our skills in areas like Schoology so that we're better prepared to meet the learning and engagement needs of our students and families. And we'll be utilizing a variety of sources throughout the school year. To this, we're going to need board approval, and then, uh, Mark has already completed the DPI waiver, but it will need signatures after formal board approval at an upcoming meeting. Point A is our count. I just want to highlight a little nation for you. I know the report is, is in our packet. Uh, it's important for you to know that we are down 55 students this year compared to last year. We had 177 students graduating the class of 2020 this spring. Our incoming 5K includes 136 students, so that's down 41 students just through natural, uh, the, uh, progression. The word is escaping me. Our incoming freshman class, the class of 2024, has 144 students, which is 33 less than the outgoing seniors. We have 30 students this year, and this is, this is significant to note, that are enrolled. Our, we're enrolled last year in our district, but this year chose, because of the, the environment that we're in, chose to be homeschooled. So we're down 30 kids because of homeschooling. They were in our district learning last year. Our 4K loss of 15 students from last year to this year, part of it is 11 students voluntarily withdrew their 4K in July and August after they had previous history. So there are reasons why we're down 55 students that we are. Despite that, Carl, our business manager, has been able to, uh, provide us with a balanced budget. This is kind of miraculous, in my opinion, a balanced budget, you'll see later, uh, uh, tonight in our meeting, and on top of that, giving our staff a raise of the CPI 1.81%. Notice our open enrollment in and outs. Last year, we, we had a discrepancy between the ins and the outs of six. This year, it's increased unfortunately to 30. We have, uh, 138 open and roll out, or 108 open and roll in, and of course, you know, we're investing considerable amounts to, uh, change that trend. My fifth point today is congratulations to Renee Youngers, our T teacher at the middle school. She's been nominated, and then we found out she received the 2020 Outstanding Educator Award. This is the Wisconsin Association for Talented and Gifted Awards Committee selected her from all of the nominations from across the state to receive this award. This conference is virtual this year, and Renee will be honored in a special video award ceremony presented by the WATG board members. In addition, Renee will be receiving a plaque to commemorate her special award. And we're excited and proud for Renee for not only being nominated, but to be selected for such a distinguished award for all that she's done for the gifted and talented in our district, and she was nominated by one of the parents of, uh, a gifted and talented student from our district. And on the ionizers, this meters, the vendor is here and installing as we speak. The high school ionizers on the, in the HVAC units are 90% complete, and the electrical will be hooked up hopefully by the end of this week. At the WLC, the ionizer bars are about 50% complete in the HVAC units. Next week, the process should be completed, and then, of course, next week, they're going to move to the middle school and the CEC, and it's about a one and a half to two-week process for them to, uh, complete the installation. The CARES Act, we mentioned last month that the local municipalities that have not, uh, spent their CARES dollars are allowed to donate them to other municipalities, and we're hoping that the town of Farmington is going to be able to provide us with those dollars that they have left over. Uh, Carol and Carl have been working diligently with their local municipalities, and I, I wrote a letter to Caroline, the chair of the town of Farmington, hoping that, uh, we're able to persuade them to provide us with those extra dollars. A homecoming update. Final note, as you know, as we give a big thank you to our students and our staff for putting together a wonderful series of safe, fun, and exciting couple of weeks. One aspect of homecoming that we really appreciate is how students and staff from across the district are participating in some of the homecoming week traditions, such as our dress-up days. In case you missed it, today is Hawaiian Day. Thursday, Friday is Neon Color Day. Next weekdays include Twin Day, Comet Spirit Day, and Class Color Day. On a related note, we want to share that we had a couple of symptomatic student athletes due to the the rise of the virus. And, uh, I'm trying to read from my notes here, and I have some typos that I did, uh. They're doing the right thing along with the coach and letting us know how they're feeling. As we all know, the COVID virus is highly contagious and be, can be contracted from nearly everywhere. Yet we also know how much time our student athletes and coaches dedicate to preparing to play or perform. So when someone steps up and does the right thing, letting us know how they're feeling health-wise, we just want to thank them for doing that right thing and working to protect their teammates, coaches, along with their families. So thank you to those players for doing the right things, even though it means our homecoming football game will be postponed for two athletes that are being tested right now. And that's all I have. Yes.
May I ask a question? As far as the extracurriculars go, uh, when we had the meeting with the parents, and we had a parent volunteer that was going to monitor all the athletes, and how is that working?
From what the reports are getting is our staff is doing a terrific job. I don't know the level of involvement, don't possibly could speak to that of the parents, but I know the staff that we have on hand are, it's going great.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a question, Ron, and maybe the, um, Mr. Robaliski can answer it. Earlier, you talked about the number of graduates, or the, uh, those who are struggling a bit, letters. Can, can you get an idea of how many students, how many seniors we're talking about in that group?
Uh, let's see if I have it here. I don't know the exact number of seniors, but 54% are over a high school body is, is all I'm aware of.
Right. I think. Next question then, and I know that we're under unusual circumstances, but what, if anything, can we do for students who are behind perhaps it's virtual, a virtual student, perhaps it's a remote learning student, that we can, uh, help them to get to the point where they will graduate? Because the numbers you're talking about are, are pretty severe. Because the numbers you're talking about are pretty severe. Do you know, Mr. Ravalski, by chance?
If, if I could ask, can you come up to the mic over here? The people online are not able to hear you. And if you could give just a very brief recap of what you just provided information wise? And then Pat has a follow-up question or two.
So we were made aware that we have significant achievement concerns with their seniors. Fifty-four letters went out to seniors that were not on track for graduation, forty-two were in jeopardy. Those letters went out to families, counselors, administrators and school social workers meeting and talking. We have an intervention team that meets weekly that monitors this and we're working with the families to make sure that one, they're aware of the situation and find out what it is that we can do to support them so that they can achieve and receive the diploma.
Do you have, has there been any discussion, I don't mean necessarily just in Waupaka, but because of the circumstances, I don't believe that Waupaka is all that much different than most schools at the moment, about graduation requirements being altered?
I have not heard anything from the DPI, but other administrators, other principals that we've talked to are seeing the same thing that we are experiencing the same. Again, nothing has been said that we're going to be able to adjust those requirements. We're trying to work with the students to, so that we can support them to reach that.
And I, and I certainly applaud you for doing all of those things. It just seems to me that it's, it's a pandemic that we're fighting, but it's also systemic throughout the whole state. And I'm just wondering if there's going to be any significant change in that because of the method by which we are teaching. And my colleagues who have been teachers know that this is something none of us were trained for, and so it's kind of new territory. Just wondering if there was any, any talk about that?
Not that I've been a part of in, in the principal meetings that I've been in. We were talking about how do we support that? I do anticipate further discussions and this may be one of the topics that we talked about. How do we, can we, what do we do to allow port and meet those students and their needs?
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
And, and Pat, to some of these students, if they can't handle the remote learning, they'll be moved to in-person learning. I mean, I get it that it's an A B schedule and there's only two days in person, but those that are all remote right now and if they're not able to stay focused and get the stuff done, they may have to do the hybrid.
It just sort of begs the question if this, our, our type of learning is, our teaching as we're doing right now, which I applaud everybody doing a great job, but if it, if it persists for months and beyond, it, it, it sort of, you have to begin to question, have we really got the right requirements in place for graduation? And we'll have to look at that, as Mike said, probably that discussion will happen in the near future.
Any other questions on the district administrators' report? Sorry, there is something in the chatter. A question that you might be able to answer, are you seeing any patterns in the courses that are most challenging for students? For example, science, English? Okay, Ron's response was not that I'm aware of. You're on the move. I'm guessing you might have something?
I do think one of the biggest things that stand out is the C T E classes, whether it's the hands-on. One, it's hard to deliver that instruction digitally. Second, that's not, their preferred learning modality is through the online. So it's, that one is really hit hard. Other challenges or patterns that we see, it's hit or miss and it's around the engagement factor with the students. Digital learning is different and it's hard and you have to be motivated, self internally motivated to really excel at it. And that's not the way that they've been learning for so long. So it's new to them and it's a challenge for them. We're trying to meet them best we can and we're going to continue to monitor and support however we can.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. Are the other schools experiencing the same problems?
Same challenges?
Yeah.
I would, I would say to a degree, I don't know is in depth at the elementary, but I know Laura and John at the middle school, we, and maybe they're here, they could speak to that. It's very similar experiences at least from what I can tell. I'm not as in-depth with the, the middle school, but I can, in our discussions, I can tell that, you know, that engagement is hard.
And just one more follow-up on that. Have we, have some of those concerns stemmed from the technological aspect? Are we still struggling with some students in terms of reaching them and/or, you know, do we have breakdowns because the internet doesn't work for them or et cetera? Or is that pretty well, we've moved beyond that?
I believe we've moved beyond it. I think everyone that has needed a hotspot has received them. And I, I just don't think that the tech part of it is, is the core issue.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the monitoring, which is this month of twenty twenty-one budget. And Mr. Hayek?
Okay, I'll try it again. Apologize for my technical difficulties. Yeah, but I'll give it one more shot. Thank you. I forgot to turn on. Yeah. Can you, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much. The mission of the school district of Waupaka is to develop students' capabilities and confidence, achieve their dreams and make the world a better place, providing a safe and compassionate environment while using our community resources wisely. Not wildly, wisely. And following is the promise. It is one of the most beautiful compensations of life. Sincerely help another without helping himself. Serve and thou shall be served. Ralph Waldo Emerson. Business services, that's what we do. And the annual budget is a financial plan to achieve objectives flexible enough to change as the present moment dictates. To provide an environment whereby children are safe, loved and easily developed. To focus on balance and needs of all stakeholders, students, staff and community members to deliver the best education possible. Service to provide teacher and support staff continuous quality professional development. Martin Luther King wrote, life's most persistent and urgent question is what are you doing for others? The two thousand twenty-one budget, I believe, had the moral fiber of servitude and taking care of its own family incorporated into the depths of its foundation. Taxes are projected to go down the last, from last year, given the district its lowest tax mill rate in more than eleven years. Wages are going up and the district's infrastructure is being strategically maintained and repaired annually. Free meal offerings to all those under the age of eighteen are being provided by our dedicated food service team. COVID nineteen safety protocols have been implemented into this budget, going way beyond the amount of relief monies offered by the government. Yet regardless of the uncertainty of being in the midst of a worldwide pandemic, the two thousand twenty twenty-one School District of Waupaka's budget is balanced. The district's fiscal house is in order. The two thousand twenty twenty-one proposed budget has revenues and expenses netting or equaling each other, twenty-six million eight hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So what's in this budget? Noteworthy budget items are providing that mission statement of a safe, compassionate environment while using the district's resources wisely. Our two police liaison officers, three registered nurses on staff, a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar needlepoint ventilation ionization system, which has a ninety-nine point nine point zero rate of COVID nineteen and SARS in all school buildings. We have two hundred thousand dollars in this budget plus and protective infrastructure needs for our COVID safety protocol. A state-of-the-art schoolology software platform for all students, parents and teachers and administrators to better deliver a robust, user-friendly virtual education. A projected two hundred thousand dollar food service operation shortfall in order to feed those in our community in need as best as possible. A one point eight one percent wage increase for all staffing groups with an addition of a fifty cent per hour increase for all district custodial staff, food service staff and maintenance staff. The second phase of the middle school roof replacement project is complete. The installation of hot water heaters, a major infrastructure upgrade is complete. Installation of boilers, a major infrastructure, infrastructure upgrade at Waupaka Learning Center is complete. The Suzuki movement program instruction cost eighty-one thousand is in this budget for the C E C curriculum. Complete. The district office safety recommendation of a renovation project, which was part of our safety assessment protocols, is in this budget and capital projects fund forty-one. Property taxes will be going down projected seven percent lower per thousand dollar of property valuation. General state aid will again increase with a projected increase, and I checked this out once again, of nine hundred thirty-seven thousand more than even last year's. Due mostly to the district being long-term debt-free, which calculates into the general state aid formula. So when things are going up, how do we balance those increases by attaining no increases in other major budgetary areas? This is part of the mission statement, using the community resources wisely. So in doing this, we waited a month to bring back our building and services group, which is district contracted custodial cleaning, cleaning services, until we could get them formulated with our nurses and, and get the protocols in play that we need them to adhere to because they're really active. By delaying them one month from coming back, even that they, even though they had an increase in a two percent annual increase, service increase in their proposal, by waiting a month, we netted the district budget to last year, meaning there was no budget increase in building services group custodial services from last year. In two thousand twenty, we also, our health insurance premiums are not going up once again. We're best in the business and no increase in negotiating premiums means no budget increase. That's the second biggest ticket item in your fun pen budget. The contract to transportation, transportation services continue to save the district approximately a hundred forty thousand dollars annually going forward compared to if the district was managed to go its own fleet. So, so each year, we assess, our continued assessments are to continue this, assess that health insurance costs in conjunction with the health insurance committee to reduce these expenditures. That's an annual occurrence to keep our eye on that big ticket item. We implement policies and procedures that will ensure fiscal responsibility. More coming attraction with the Neola policy upgrades and provide financial solvency by continuing to prioritize budget items that are in the long-term best interest of students and taxpayers. And continue to evaluate the Roman trends and link our long-range budget plans to the new strategic plan for the school district. And of course, continue to analyze our staffing needs. Another component of this budget, which is service oriented, is safety, health and wellbeing. We continue to align our food service requirements by offering nutritious quality meals to ensure those qualifying for free and reduced meals are provided with them. We continue to assess our environmental safety compliance in conjunction with the district's school safety consultant, keeping the district up to date with its latest safety requirements. And we continue the district exploration of energy conservation methodologies. We continue maintaining the, improving the district quality buildings and grounds and infrastructure. Remember, the high school is twenty, over twenty years old, but it's in great shape because we continue each year maintaining and improving the district's quality of their buildings and infrastructure. We provide teacher and support staff continuous quality professional development by telehealth, mental and physical professional expertise from doctors via the district's health insurance program at no charge to deploy through telemedicine. We are committed to providing all our employees a secure confidential professionally managed employee assistance program from experts at no charge. So that's service, I believe. And now we need to make some assumptions with this budget and that comes, gets into the data. So the following assumptions have been guided by the budget. Of course, I'll have difficulties in laws and regulations as the state or federal government render these assumptions incomplete or inaccurate. This budget, this budget will be adjusted in late October to reflect the final certification of general state aid and property valuation. District enrollment this year, using not the head count, using the third Friday methodology shows that we are decreasing by seventy-four students from last. The difference between head count and the third Friday count is really the F T, all F T Ds or students are monitored. Is their value numerically? Some students are worth point four, some students forty point five, such as four K. And, and so that's what we've lost, seventy-four students from last year. It is assumed that the district will accept one hundred and eight students as Robinson, open enrollment tuition waiver law and that a hundred and thirty-eight will go out under the open enrollment tuition waiver law. There's a hundred twenty-seven thousand plus in grant dollars applied to this charter school. And as far as position movement within the district, I think this is good data. We replaced positions due to retirement or resignations, eleven teachers this fiscal year, twenty-one support staff and one administrator. We added positions for teachers, no supports and one nurse. Non-replaced positions. Ooh, I can't see it, but it, you probably can see it better than I can. Now let me hide this. Five, that would be five F T and one support staff, five teachers and one support staff. So, so the money comes from, where does the money come from? It's really guided by the revenue cap. I've talked about it for years here. The school finance regulations specify the amount of dollars the district is permitted to raise from property taxes in conjunction with general state aid, and this is amount, this amount is called the revenue limit. Ninety-two point six four percent of all the district's revenues, all the capacity we have, comes from these two sources. Property taxes shows forty-four percent, forty-four point one. When I converted it to Google Drive, it kind of took the slide a little bit different, but you can see that state sources now support this district forty-eight percent versus forty-four percent for taxes. That has shifted and mainly shifted because of our drop in our debt. The historical general aid trend, you can see that we've been notorious for losing general state aid years. You can see the first eight hundred fifty-four thousand lost, then another seven hundred eighty-seven thousand. And then you can see how that trend goes. But now the last two years, when, last year and this year, you can see that last year we nine hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars more than the prior year. This year, we're receiving nine hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars more than last year. So last year we had somewhat, and I'll show you in this slide, you can see that over the, the long period of this relationship of tax increases and the relationship. It's a hand in hand. So you can see over all this period of time, we, the district has a cumulative loss of about two million fifty-two, two million dollars. Fund taxes to supplement that on the revenue cap, we have increased the taxes by two point six. But during that same period of time, I think it's noteworthy to say that we could have taxed more. We could have had a sky-high mill rate and taxes. So you can see that even though we made up for the difference, we could have made up even more. Historical tax dollars collected, this shows basically that taxes are going down and they went down last year and they're going to go down projected more this year. So the school district of Opaaca has projected property tax and mill rate to support this. Estimated at $11,998,835. The mill rate per $1,000 of property valuation, you can see the trend. 1098 in 1617, 1079, 1084, last year 798 and this year it's projected at $7.28. The school district of Opaaca's mill rate pattern, this is where I've said the taxes are lowest in 11 years and probably more. This is only the data I've had since I've brought it to the district. So taxes are going down this year. With around these school districts, districts mill rate comparisons, I think it's always good to look at. And you can see in 1890 where we were and how we are comparing now. Now we're one of the most taxing entities from Clintonville, Iowa, Manoah, Montana, Wyoming, and Wyoming Rose. As this trend continues, which I suspect it will. The projected tax impact for a home value of $80,000 going from last year's mill rate of 98 to this year's projected at $7.28 per $1,000 of property value is a $70 decrease. If you take that forward, you can see as the home value increases, then of course the property tax would compound based upon that number. Property valuation history in this district. And this is a, this is a driving force of the mill rate as well. What happens, what happens here is you can see I have a chart that goes up to $1.7 billion. Uh, this year I'll have to increase this chart eventually. It's at, it went up 1.69% from the prior year, which shows somewhat we have an economic downturn. We expected that to probably, and the way it was going to go up to more like 4%, but being that what it was going up, it's going down. So it's 1.647 and some million, billion dollars. So if you take a look at this slide, it shows in 1617, this district taxed 15.8 million. 1718, 16.2 million. 1819, 16.6 million. Last year, 12.9 million and this year, 11.9 million. So where's the money spent? Expenditures, there's two different perspectives that are part of the accounting methodology and they go into the the DPI required publication and expenditures by function is one way to look at that expenditure, which is the purpose of which the expenditure is made and then expenditure by objects, which is a broader picture of is the type of goods and services purchased. If you look at our division of expenditures and this is changing as well. Our instruction, it counts for 48%, but our pupil and staff support is 47%. This, this is all encompassing. This is educating the whole child. We have more nurses. We have psychologists, counselors, therapists. It includes transportation, athletic administration. So you can see these are becoming really close now. And talk about a balanced budget, it's a bad philosophy going forward as well. And you can see the breakout, the simplistic pie graph of the function, 48 to 47. And then this one, another way of looking at it is the biggest ticket item of our, what we do is serve. And the biggest, the big difference to our budget is salaries and fringe. 72% of this budget is earmarked for salary and fringe, non-salary 28%. But this too is shifting. This years back was about 75%. So we're becoming more equal. We're taking care of our infrastructure, but a lot of the reasons we can do that is because we're having no increases in other budgetary areas. So I've thought about it in years past, I gave charts of all the funds and you read, maybe you read through it, maybe you got lost, maybe it was overly complicated. So I wanted to make this the big picture, all funds, the funds we have in Opaaca. And sometimes they're in a relation with each other. Fund 10 is the general fund. It's the connector. It's the bottom line. It's the balancer. It's really, it's, it balances every fund that legally must balance but cannot. Fund 10 is where your equity is. Everything truly is earmarked, your audit and everything, it's Fund 10. Special fund, the special revenue trump fund, however, Fund 21 is a surprise. And it really is to do, and it's moving more toward the direction of activity accounts, students, fundraising, donations, merchandising. Within Fund 21, there's multitude of accounts for perhaps golf, sports, things like that, that the managers have control over spending those and adding to whatever event or ever a criteria or whatever group they're responsible for. Fund 27, however, the special education service fund is of $4,155,810,000 which only receives approximately one-third of revenues of support from the government. The rest is expense and Fund 10 annually. So Fund 10 has to pick up the difference with their, their, that's one of the funds that 110 is the balancer. What's an expense of $2 million some dollars and I'll show you that number shortly. Fund 38 is our state trust fund loan. It's a short-term loan for the athletic complex that we attained a few years back with 2020, 22 being the last year remaining of this debt. And Fund 41, one of our capital projects fund, it came from a former tax levy last year and it's always earmarked. It's a way to get districts when they don't, to have money aside for major capital projects and infrastructure repair, repairs. This, we're earmarking this monies, these monies in conjunction with our district's safety investment recommendations from last year uh, to do district office safety renovation project estimated start date, December 2020. And then there's Fund 49, which is another capital projects fund, but it's not, the money doesn't come from tax money. It comes from sale of district property. As you know, we earmarked, you're marking this account. We're earmarking as savings for a future new maintenance building yet to reach the anticipated. But that's what those funds are for. Fund 50, it's all service to operate, all food service operations operate all this fund in accordance Department of Public Instruction. This fund must balance annually. Fund 10 must supplement any shortfall by expensing any loss. So if you take all these together, the accumulation of all funds, the projected expenses for all these funds this year is $32,728,938. And I just want to, before I get to the next slide, I just want to say that I, we are so blessed to have a great staff. Uh, I have a great staff, Linda and Colleen and Carol. They are expensing and running and doing $32 million worth of funds accurately uh, through this district, uh, with no stone left unturned. So you know, this district is in great shape because of them. This, this will help you work out, this slide will help you tie out that $32 million dollar number. So if you look at that first column, the budget column, and you can see Fund 10, which I just explained, that's $26,888,998. If you just go right down it, you can see this number right here. So that's Fund 10. Fund 21, 280,000, we expect to come in and go out. It's kind of an in and out. So not, that's what the would be this fiscal year for that, that's we're anticipating. Special education, I just mentioned, that's $4,155,810. And then state trust fund loan I just mentioned. And the capital projects, we expect to have $60,000 in expenditures for district office renovation. You add the food service fund and you come up with a $32 million, 728,938 off funds. As you can see, so that's how I wanted to show you where that number comes. Uh, this is the budget publication. This is the recommended budget format. Some districts only use this for their presentation to the board of education, uh, when they're solidifying a budget. But this really shows you the DPI breaks things out and they're most concerned with revenues. They want you to account your revenues because you're getting money from feds, you're getting money from the state. They want you to account for these pretty, pretty specifically. And as you can see that after the first column right here shows where our ending fund balance was this year, 9.9. And here projecting to not having any increase or basically the fund balance would stay the same next fiscal year because this is a balanced budget with no, no shortfall and no surplus. This just takes you out to local sources. Uh, if you go down, you can see local sources and you add all the sources up and you can all these subs, state sources is 12.968 million dollars. You can take a look at all these detail where the money is coming from, but that's where that's, that's at. But if you move further toward the federal sources, you can see that uh, this year, the federal sources, yeah, we are getting $1 million compared to 712,000 the prior year. One of the things I wanted to make a grab here on this district with COVID protocol and everything in place, only received $280,000 in government subsidy. And I anticipate quite frankly seeing any more. So we're doing it somewhat on our own, but we're doing it. And so you can see this total budget adds up to $26,888, the same number uh, that was above in the revenues. So it's a balanced budget. This is a breakout of revenue that is not required. But it shows you more so where the money is coming from in more detail. And you can see one of the things with even transportation aid were required by the Department of Public Instruction to have transportation. We're not required to have a food service department. But food, transportation is really only supplemented based on routes and a dollar, small dollar amount. So a transfer to a small amount would be placed about $50, $60,000 to supplement it. And that, and it's right here, right there. So it's not substantial. Other expenditures, the expenditures in Fund 10 is broken out by function. According to the Department of Public Instruction, you can see undiverided curriculum, regular curriculum, vocational curriculum, physical curriculum. All the curriculum, you can see as you go forward, sorry, the dates aren't, the years aren't in here, but I think you can understand that the 2021 proposed. And there's again, all our expenditures, supports, staff, and share up and down. Are part of this. Intertone fund transfers, if you see that right here, what is this? Well, that's part of your operating transfer. That's keeping the, that's the Fund 10 has to supplement food services here and special education. So there's 2.8 million just expensing the accounts. With still a balanced budget. This is a breakout of salary, basically salary versus non-salary. That's, that's 72, that graph I showed you 72% versus 28%. And that's the breakout by categories. One of the things to point out, open enrollment. Open enrollment, so we, if we have, one of the things with open enrollment is we're expensed and we're revenue. So we're receiving $950,000 anticipated in revenue on a revenue line. And we also, 1.1 million at for expenses because we have more students going out than going in. So that's where that manifests. Fund 21, this is a breakout for the budget publication as well, the donation. And I show you the 280,000 in, 280,000 out, containing a $259,000 uh, stable fund balance in that fund. Fund 27, uh, revenues. You can see right, this column right here, I think my cursor is working. Last year we had a 2.4 million operating transfer. This is what this saying, Fund 27 has to balance. So to balance, these are the numbers that you need, you need to fill it. This year I'm projecting a $2.2 million operating transfer from Fund 10 to fill it. If you go down, it's, it's pretty, you can see you get some money from state sources. And our biggest item is our categorical aid upon our special education and a report that was just completed. And it's, and that's where that money. Uh, breaking it down further in federal and the DPI special projects grants. These are more so flow, idea flow through and preschool, idea preschool. These are $481,000 earmarked coming from that. Uh, other revenue is Medicaid and things such as that. And as we get further down with the expenses, expenses are broken up exactly in the same. Fund 10 is, so it's a kind of a mirror of Fund 10, except it's short and Fund 10 has to supplement it. But this is not abnormal. This is something that every district experiences as an operating transfer in special education. Fund 38, I talked about, uh, the state trust fund loan. You can see that, uh, uh, that's, that's how that manifests as well. And then Fund 41 and Fund 49, uh, there's the office renovation put into the budget and this shows of $180,000 budget left to go toward that Fund 49 because that's a combination of these two. That's earmarked for a new maintenance building, which we have not attained that goal yet. Service operations, it's a 1.12 million dollar operation. $206,000 will be, uh, short and that will be supplemented by Fund 10. This is the actual publication that's been submitted to publication uh, because there's a timeframe and timelines that it would have to be in the paper before the budget hearing. It's been in the public for two weeks prior. These are the same numbers, it condensed into smaller variable for the newspaper print. Um, it shows the same numbers. I'm going to go through it real fast, but I'll come stop at this one. This is where you can see that, uh, our taxes are going down. And this shows the tackle rate, 11,000 tax rate, state trust fund loan, 11,998,835. So that, so that was the budget publication, which I went through rather fast. John F. Kennedy says, or said, we express our gratitude. We must never forget that the highest appreciation is not utter words, but to live by them. You know, when we talk about health insurance and things like that, these, when we say we're trying to do and keep this district in great fiscal order, the health insurance has been this ongoing gap. And this slide is a year old. So this shows that while the industry or counterparts are actually going up 70% at the same time period, and I could add another 7% on both sides now to this. It shows that Opaaca is going the opposite way. What has that done to us? That has helped us, uh, to not have any more long-term debt in one way, but it has helped us in our year-end net fund equity position. So one of the things you can see that over a 10 years, that this district's fund balance has increased by $3 million. And one can say like, whoa, that, that substantial, but you have to remember that fund balance budgets 10 years ago were more so 23 million, now you're about 26 million. So you need to increase your fund balance to be, to be prudent. So you can see that each year, not to short-term borrow, not to, to get interest revenue. One of the things you have with fund balance is you get interest revenue. That interest revenue is used for instruction. So if you don't have interest revenue and you're rather, you're paying, you're paying $100,000, $200,000 to borrow money and you have to become, have to have it done each year. Fund equity is what I would say is a huge component and I'll talk about it a little bit of time. But when I wanted to point this out, we didn't tax to the max for nine years. But at the same time, which is noteworthy, we were increasing our fund balance, not taxing to the max, giving consumer price index raises and completing our infrastructure. So it's quite, it's quite a, quite a, uh, a fantastic experience for this district. Fund balance, and I want to talk about this. I would argue it is the most important component to a district finances, health, cash flow, and one should try to increase it each year. And forget about percent ratios to budget and policy growth limitations. Wise fiscal leaders do their best with what they are given, ever looking to the future. And don't take my word for it, you can take more word for it. And why I say that is a lot of districts, uh, if you can continue to manage the funds you are given, you don't, as you increase your fund balance and eliminate short-term borrowing, you can do so much more. But you don't have to go off of randoms. You can borrow short-term money, short-term loans. Building your fund equity is crucial to your infrastructure and we're in a place today that most districts would envy. So I want to change gears a little bit and show a little bit about current educational cost comparisons with surrounding. It's one of the most reliable methods. Uh, there's a current educational cost, which is overall instruction and instructional support costs for student. And then there's the total educational cost, which really gives combines all the support we give our children. Uh, not just the instruction, but all the psychiatrists, transportation facility, food. Uh, it's a combination of it all. And I just want to take you through that. And the most current data we have though, it's the 2019, 20, and one might say, well, why don't you? why don't you have 2020? Uh, uh, this, this, the, our annual report, our annual reports, our special education annual reports are just submitted and audit verified and DPI is still going through the last fiscal year. So it's almost a year behind when you're looking at data. Um, if you're looking at starting school districts, I'm comparing these to Clintonville, Iola, Manawha, New London, WAPAC, of course, is in there, Waigun, Fremont and Wild Rose. And you can see that, you know, our food, uh, cost per member is more than any of the surrounding districts. Uh, but you see the total end of cost is basically, I'll take this next slide first, is showing this, uh, the state average is 12, uh, 12,186 dollars, uh, per student for the current surrounding school districts in that, in that graph prior is 11,625, 11,625, a little bit less. But when you combine the whole picture of what we're doing for children, because it's state average still the same, 14,652, they combined it, uh, surrounding school districts, 14,127, but WAPAC is now higher than the surrounding school district, which I think is a good place. Compare that to CISA 5, 35 school districts and you have, you'll have this data as well. You can see that, yeah, again, state average 12,186, 5 average 11,750, and WAPAC 11,750. Well, it's true again, and even more so. WAPAC is out, is actually putting more money into their total educational cost per child than all those 35 surrounding school districts, all, and then all the surrounding school districts you've seen before. So I think that's quite incredible. So, so I'm going to take you down to the enrollment trend and I wanted, so we, nutrition, uh, we're doing great things. We haven't, uh, reached the fruit of our labors with our city administrator and Aaron Jensen and Aaron Ron is doing a fantastic job of getting more housing market, but that takes time. And right now we're, we're still in this down, but it, but as they, those things manifest and there's plans out there to make a difference and stop, stop that, uh, so too does this revenue cap help us? And I want to take you through that. This is the 2020, 21 revenue cap, wide is basically the whole budget. And if you look right in the middle of the screen, it has September and summer FTE membership over, you know, over, over, uh, basically three-year average and they have two three-year averages. Well, when they fill, you can see last year, our, uh, September FTE was 205, this year it's 2009. So as you take that, that's because it's based on, if you see this, some students are worth .4. You can see our summer school count dropped from 78 to 13. It was doing fantastic, but safe first, and that's what we needed to choose to do. This is where our, our three-year rolling averages kind of help us out. This number right here, line six, I think it is, 2064 is a number that, the three-year rolling average, uh, in this line six is a per, in terms of per pupil amount per child. Government, uh, it's written into the stat that we get $742 times that number. That's about a 1.5 million dollar item. It changed a few years ago because they weren't increasing the revenue cap. They were saying, uh, they weren't giving a hundred dollars per pupil. They weren't giving a hundred fifty dollars per pupil to increase that cap. The plan was then we'll give you, that's what they're still doing. And I want to point out this for that declining enrollment piece. So even though we lost this amount of students, the revenue cap gives us a declining enrollment exemption. It keeps you whole to the last year. So it tries to make your impact of loss of students not great and it will continue to do that. It will, it's never a looming disaster. It's always ideal to just incrementally, not like thousands at once, because then you'd have to bill and money, but to get it an upward trend. So that, that's the revenue limit. And this piece right here is that 1.6 billion property valuation aspect that goes in to the play of the revenue cap. The next column of this revenue cap, really the bottom line to this cap is $10 million of general state aid. So they give you $10 million of general state aid. They put the declining enrollment exemption back in, so you didn't, they hold, they held you harmless and, uh, you get to your bottom line and here's your taxes. 10, Fund 10, your allowable taxes, 11,782,579, 216,256, that equates to 11,998,835. That is your tax rate. That's the breakout rate here of the revenue cap. That's the calculation and that's what we'll be asking for. It probably changed slightly. Treat the earth well. It was not given to you by your parents. It was loaned to you by your children. We do not inherit the earth from our ancestors. We borrow it from our, it's good morality. And I, I love this quote by Brene Brown, because I'm going to end right now on a quote. What we know matters, but who we are matters more. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Carl. We will be having, uh, we will be scheduling a special board meeting or finance committee meeting so that, uh, all the board members have more opportunity to go through these numbers, uh, and we'll be able to have Mr. Hayek and Mr. Sari addressing questions our board may have about any specific elements of the budget. Uh, we will be doing that before the October 29th budget hearing, uh, and special board meeting. So we will send out a survey to make a survey monkey request to make sure that, uh, everyone is available, or at least the vast majority of board members are available, uh, for that meeting. With that, uh, thank you for that overview. Any questions at this point with the understanding that we'll be having, uh, a special meeting to address this? Okay, my apologies, my battery died, so I'm just on my phone at this point. Uh, so if there are any questions in the chat area, I'll ask Mr. Sari to pick those up for me. Um, for some reason my phone does not, uh, I will move on. Our upcoming meetings and activities, the first one is October 15, Charter School Grant Monthly Call, which one, two, uh, that's at 3:00 PM. And Sandy, did you have anything else you wanted to add on that?
I, I would like to. This is, pardon, pardon, oh, the DPI has a monthly call with the cohorts within schools who have been, are you getting feedback, are you getting feedback?
There is a little feedback.
Oh, boy. Let me try this. Is that better?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Megan Sanders and I have a presentation this month. And, um, and I'm sorry to ask this again, are you getting feedback now?
Uh, no, but you're fading in and out a bit. Bottom line is, young Megan Sanders will be presenting. Yep, that's correct.
Yes, yeah. And it's, it's not a workshop, it's a 20-minute presentation. DPI has plenty of capacity for, um, people to listen in or watch if they want. Otherwise it will be recorded and we can share the recording after.
Okay. Thank you very much and we appreciate, uh, your participating as well as that of Megan's participation.
Just a question, Sandy, is, is it going to be earmarked for WAPAC's CEC or is it just in general?
I, I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand your, I'm not, the call.
Is that specific designed for WAPAC?
No, it's designed for, our, our topic happens to be autonomy from an authorizer in governance for one, from one authorizer's perspective and one governance board member's perspective. And so it's presenting on that particular issue to all of the people who will be attending the meeting and there, it's a requirement of the federal sub grant that someone, and sometimes they specify with, um, person needs to attend and others can't attend, but it's every member of cohorts one and two of the federal sub grant recipients, um, participate in, each of those schools participates in these monthly calls. So, and, and each school is given an opportunity at some point to make a pre-.
You're voicing over real well there.
Sorry.
Okay. Uh, also on October 15th at 5:00 PM, we have the Learning in 2021 Stakeholders Meeting, October 22nd, uh, the WASB Fall Regional Conference, which will be held virtually at 7:00 PM. October 29th, the budget hearing at 4:00 PM. November 10th, regular meeting at 5:15. And again, we're scheduling a special meeting to go over the budget in advance of that October 29th meeting. With that, uh, next on the agenda, Student Services Committee with the chairperson of the committee not being available this evening, uh, has a committee meeting.
Uh, Student Services Committee, September 28th, and all three members of the committee were present along with, um, we had a full board present. And the purpose of the meeting was for the administration to provide our committee update relating to pickup delivery of school, for our students who are not currently in school in our buildings. Um, so Mrs. Schmidt, um, gave us a good report of in the community, what is available for resources and food for, uh, families in our, our community, uh, who might be in need. And I think we were surprised at how many resources there are for food in our community. Um, she also guaranteed that food plays a huge role in how students learn and how well they learn and how it is, um, important for us as a district to realize that we need to provide and meet the nutritional needs of our students. Um, our depart, our food service department at, in our district right now is down five positions from last year due to COVID. So, um, it's a challenge for food service this year to provide meals and to do all the work that's involved to get, to feed our students who are here every day, along with students who are learning remotely or in their homes. Um, however, we did, there was a survey that was sent out to families and the number of meals requested by families is decreasing from last year, which does help the food service department, um, a little. So, um, the food service and Mrs. Schmidt, Ms. Schmidt outlined for us that food service was going to work diligently to be able to provide pickup meals for students who are learning remotely or on demand. And hopefully the pickup would be at two locations, DLC and the high school, and it would be two days a week and it would be starting approximately October 14th. Is Lori here? How's that going?
I believe we'll be starting that meeting tomorrow.
Good. Tomorrow?
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay. So it's, it's going as planned, which is excellent. Um, the big takeaway, I guess, from this is our chairperson, Mark Olbisky, and the entire board asked the administration that we get 100% of the, 100% of our students who need meals and want meals, that they get them. And, um, hopefully this would be available two times a week for pickup. So while no action was taken at this meeting as far as we, uh, recommendation, it was a wonderful informative meeting and we're doing the best we can do to make sure our students are fed.
Thank you very much. Don't drop the mic, as they say. Uh, we will move on to the Personnel Committee, who are the chair.
Oh, I'll cheer for that. You bet.
Uh, the Personnel Committee met last week and we had a, a little lengthy agenda. Um, but we came away from it with four recommendations that we would like to make tonight. And the first recommendation was to accept an increase in Karen Steinmeier's hourly wages as of July 1st, 2020. Karen works at the High School District Office and has been with us for a long time. So we needed to increase her wages. So, um, do I hear a motion for that?
Okay, that being a recommendation by the committee, no second is needed. Without any discussion. No discussion? Okay, Patty, that was a motion. All right. Uh, roll call. Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Aye.
Eddie Mannion?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Dale Feld? Steve Johnson, yes. Next item?
The second item that was on agenda is we needed to look, um, at restructuring our high school and middle school athletic and activity secretary position. And with the increase in extracurriculars and, um, all the additional extracurricular groups that are forming, there's a lot more work that's involved coordinating that. And so we needed to increase that position by hours from 200, or days, rather, excuse me, from 209 days to 240 days. And to also restructure the High School Student Services Secretary position, which involves a lot more now, and to increase those current workdays from 225 to 240 days. So we are looking for a recommendation. Pat, do you want to make it?
I'll make that in the form of a recommendation from the committee.
Okay, being a recommendation by the committee, uh, no second is required. Uh, oh, uh, we'll go through roll call. Dale Feld? Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Eddie Mannion?
Yes.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Steve Johnson, yes. Next item?
The third item that was on the agenda is to approve and cross 1.81% CPI salary increase for all of our staff and all of our employee groups for the fiscal year of 2021.
And I'll make that in the form of a motion from the committee and that would include those that we just previously recommended there, uh, increased hours or days that would also increase or include the increase instead in salary.
That being a motion and recommendation by the committee, no second is required. Roll call. Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson, yes.
Uh, the fourth item on the agenda is, and this is a little background information, for the past, I believe it's three years, the board has had a, um, running, what do I want to say? A, 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 a running format for increasing wages to different employee groups within the district. We couldn't do it all at one time, so, uh, we had this running form that we were doing. And this year, um, our, just, our district custodial staff and our food service staff and the maintenance staff were on the docket to receive an increase. So the board voted that our, is coming forward with the recommendation that along with the 1.81% salary increase across the board, that all of our, um, employees are getting, that these groups would be, have an additional increase of 50 cents per hour for the fiscal year 2021.
And I'll make it in the form of a committee, uh, recommendation.
Being a committee recommendation, no second is required. We'll do a roll call. Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Aye.
Dale Feld?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Steve Johnson, yes. Thank you very much. Administration will start with writing September enrollment report.
In your packet, you'll receive the annual third Friday, September count. And as we mentioned previously, we're down with 55 less students headcount than we were the previous year. Also included in this report are those same open enrollment numbers that I shared with you earlier and Carl shared in his report, 138 open enrolled out and 108 open enrolled in, a difference of 30 in the negative. Otherwise, the report is pretty standard, nothing, nothing real or shattering. I don't know if anybody has any questions? Early graduation, Mr. Olbisky, the early graduation list for you. And I believe we have 17 different individuals looking to graduate early for a variety of reasons. Whether it's going to college, going to the tech school, going to work to save money for college, joining the military, a variety of reasons. We're happy for these students and we're looking for board approval of the report as presented.
So, move.
Second.
I have one question for Mr. Olbisky. And I don't know if you need to come up. You might be able to, that'd be a yes or no. But we talked earlier about graduates who may be in a little bit of hot water when it comes to credits earned for graduation. Are any of these, is this a firm number or are we looking at some of these who may not in fact be graduating?
The response is each of these students is on track, needing to complete the current courses.
Is there, and again, I don't mean to belabor, but if one of these or more of these students do not receive the credit and we, we here are voting, if you will, to allow them, do they just continue on until May?
The response for those that are not in the PAC, yes, they would continue on until they fulfill the requirements for graduation. Okay, other questions? Anything on chat, Mr. Sari? Okay, very good. We did have a motion and second. Do a roll call. Dale Feld? Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Steve Johnson, yes. Okay, with that, that brings us to the consent agenda.
If I could just mention--
Just one moment.
If I could just mention, under B Personnel, number three hires for the 2021, you'll see letter E who happened wife and Ms. Schmidt, the letter that points out, and if you click on it, you'll see that I had nothing to do with any of the process. I was not involved in the hiring. I encouraged my wife not to apply, but she did. And they ended up hiring her. But I don't want it to seem like there was some sort of, what's the word, nepotism. I just wanted that on record. Thanks.
Mr. Feld might have something to say about his spouse and he working together.
And does she normally listen to you this well?
No, it follows me.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry. Okay, I consent to this motion.
So, move.
Motion by Betty, second by Dale. Discussion? Roll call. Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Feld?
Steve Johnson, yes.
Before we adjourn, I just have a question about the meeting. Before we disband, Sandy was going to set up, are we, are we set with the meeting?
No, that is--
On the agenda, that's why I ask. Okay.
I think that's going to be Thursday, next week, Thursday.
Thursday, the-- Thursday, 22nd, 11 o'clock. And will that be Zoom only? I mean, we're not going to set up this room for that, are we?
Those that wish to attend in person, we will be in the morning, the distance waiting center.
And the only reason I ask is because school will be in session on that, at that time. So, I just wanted, okay. Just wanted to verify that that was the right time. Thank you.
We're hoping to have, well, obviously, we'll see if everybody's able to do it. We will survey the board. But we're hoping to have that financial committee meeting on Tuesday, the 20th, at 2:00, 27th, 27th. Okay.
But we will be sending out an email to confirm availability of the board members on that date.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with that, is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Feld to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Betty Mannion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I assume no one opposed, but I do have to ask-- Thank everyone.